Well, meeting come to order for the city council regular meeting. Five thirty P M. Monday, February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, City Hall, Council Chambers. Everybody rise to say the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. We don't have any additions or changes to the agendas, so if I have a motion.
Motion to close it.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. We have a public hearing on East Ninth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Construction Engineer in Case Item One in your blue. Motion, open the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? If you're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing for presentation.
Right. Mindy, can you change the screen, please? Thank you. So this is.
Just had it.
Did it?
It was.
Was it okay? So we don't.
No, no. This is public improvement hearing for East Ninth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Construction. This is the location of the scope. It's East Ninth Avenue between Tenth Street and Eleventh Street. It's right behind USPS. This is first of two hearings required by state statute. This is just a proposed assessment. It's not final, or it's not how much we're going to actually assess or anything. It's preliminary hearing. And this is the scope or proposed project right now. It's about two hundred and ninety foot of sanitary sewer that we're going to install. This is our current assessment policy is basically saying the cost of construction divided by the numbers of assessment units are basically the rate of the assessment that we're going to charge them. It's one hundred percent assessable. A city is not obligated to pay any of the assessment rate by our policy. And this is a current estimate of the project. This includes the pavement restoration after the sewer project is completed. Comes down to about hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and this is divided by three different properties. Comes down to sixty, approximately sixty thousand dollars per lot to assess. The reason being this is so high is because the first hundred and sixty-seven foot of the project is not covered by any properties right now. The first property comes after the hundred and sixty-seven foot. So basically, that first bit of a sewer is just to get to the first property, which is still needed to be covered by those three property owners by policy. But the problem is, the state statute says the amount of special assessment cannot exceed the special benefit. And if any of the property owners were to appeal, we have to justify the amount of special assessment that we're charging them. And process would be hiring an appraisal or somebody to evaluate the value of the actual assessment versus benefit. And if they call certain amount lower than what we're charging them, we will have to lower that assessment rate, and rest of them would be covered by city. So we have a couple options to proceed with this project or this whole process. First option would be privatized project management. Basically, we, as a city, we call this whole project off and then hand it over to the property owners to manage, design, and everything, construct every necessary private sewer, but ask them to build per city spec. And after whole project is over, we can take the sewer to public system, and then we can maintain. That way, the assessment, we don't have to go through assessment. It's private work. So we're not obligated to do any appeal process or risk of appealing or any of those tax-related This is second option. We can have them sign waiver of irregularity and appeal, which is basically have them agree to whatever we're proposing, or they will agree with the final fee of assessment prior to project or anything at this point. And that way, we make sure they don't appeal after assessment is proposed, the final assessment is proposed. So we have, the city doesn't take any risk of appealing again. And third option is subsidizing assessment rate. Simply, we go through that whole process of appraisal and hiring this proper professional to evaluate the benefit of this whole project and have that as our assessment rate, and rest of it, city pays it. And last option would be postpone whole schedule, just this current project, and develop a whole new street reconstruction project. This street was originally built in nineteen fifty-eight and overlaid in two thousand and ten, which is about thirteen years old. And by the time we develop a CIP or develop a project will be at least a year or two by the time that's about the lifetime of the overlay pavement. But Water Department informed me that water service right now on that street is a little messed up, too. It's not per city code. So I would include water assessment as well in that project since the whole street is busted up, opened up at the time. The downside of this would be the total assessment would be higher because I'm including sewer and water now. But the good side would be because the project scope is getting bigger, the unit price of individual line items might go down. But that's, there's no promises about that because construction cost been increasing every year by five to ten percent every year, so I don't know how this is going to go in the future. So those are four options we can consider.
I have a question.
Yes.
So on the very first one, you showed how many feet it was, and then X number of feet have no property on it. Can you explain that?
Sure.
A street have no property adjacent to it? That doesn't compute in my head.
So currently, there's a sewer going up and down this way. The main public sewer is going up and down this way.
On Eleventh.
On Eleventh, yes. And there's two properties here and here. They are connected to Eleventh Street this way. So to get to these three properties is going this way and have a dead end on this side. So because these two properties are not served by this proposed sewer line, they don't have to be chipped in for this project. The assessment won't be on these two properties.
How, on the other end, the dead end side, which isn't a dead end, right?
Correct. There's a Tenth Street on the west side.
How do they get serviced?
They're off of Tenth Street as well.
The three in question are currently off of Tenth Street.
Nope, nope. Three currently is from the Eleventh Street. So basically, we're replacing what's existing because they're having a lot of troubles, or I was told that they, they're cleaning every year. And it's only, I believe, six inches, and city code is a minimum of eight inches of main if they want to turn into a public sewer system.
And you said it was initially put in, and it was a private system?
Yes, correct. And we're guessing back in nineteen fifty sometime, back then. We really don't have a accurate record of this private sewer right now.
I looked at the three parcel files, and two of them had building, the original building permits. One of the houses was built in nineteen forty-one, and one was in nineteen fifty-one. There was not a original building permit on the third property. But that's.
Is this how we always assess per in-town like this?
A usual assessment would be this whole project divided by linear foot of every properties would be assessed, and then how much ever the frontage there would be their assessment.
So the other properties would normally get assessed?
Yes, if these two were.
We're putting extra burden on these three properties because.
There's no property served the first half.
There's no property served there, but that's not their fault.
That's not their fault, but to get there, that's what's necessary, to get there. Unfortunately, if it was a bigger block, and even if we have a little bit of that empty length of that, that would be divided into so many more properties that would lower the assessment because everybody would share the little bit more. But this case, we're talking only three properties. So three properties eating all that cost.
Would it make a difference if this used to be a city line instead of used to be private?
If this were the city line, we usually, we don't assess any of the utility reconstruction projects. It's only initial installation of the project is assessed.
Chad.
Have you figured out in the hypothetical normal, I almost do normal in the quote thing, which I think is silly, but in the normal way, if the other properties on that street were connected by linear foot, have you figured that out of what each property would be assessed if it were done the normal way?
Not that way, but I looked up the typical, typical assessment for sewer project was between twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, so in that case, I was doing math during this. If, if two hundred and ninety feet was a total project, one sixty-seven is the non-affected because they're on Eleventh, that leaves a hundred and twenty-three feet of the two ninety. Okay? That is roughly forty-two point three-quarter percent. Okay? Rough. Okay? Which equates of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to about sixty, or seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. If you divided that by three, we'd be at twenty-five thousand six fifty per the three properties.
Which is pretty tip, I would say average amount, correct?
Okay.
I'm kind of leaning more that way as well, because when you buy a property, I don't think that you immediately think, where does the sewer come from? Is it private? Is it city? Like, that's not something that you typically look at.
Right.
And so unless these were the original owners, and I don't know, and I don't care to know, I guess, but you would have no idea that you were buying a property that might cost you this much money to hook up to sewer.
Yes, but, oh, yeah, yes.
Yes and no, but you got to take a look at, okay, so three properties on that thing, the assessed value of some of those properties is, this is, the assessment, should we do it at sixty, roughly sixty thousand per property, is more than half of what some of those are, even assessed for as a total property. That's asinine in my book to think that that would be an assessment. So, I mean, I don't mind the math part of, we cover the fifty-seven and a quarter percent. They cover, in a typical situation, what would be the forty-two and three-quarter percent, which would roughly equate equally would be twenty-five, six fifty or so.
Larry.
They're still, they're still operating off the old street, though.
Correct.
Yeah. Number four would look much promising to me.
I forget what four exactly was.
If we were to go with option number four, we will have to go through this process again because that's completely new project.
What would the timeframe be if it was postponed?
It would be as early as twenty twenty-five.
It, in my head, it makes sense if you're going to dig everything up to not only do a sewer, but if there's water issues, let's just take care of it all at once.
That means we, the city will subsidize and eat more cost of that, too, talking about all that cost, yeah.
But they'd fix another issue.
We will meet our current design code and how everything else was built, yes.
Steve.
When we started discussing this last week, one of the, one of the considerations is what is the city's responsibility to provide utility services to their residents, which, for whatever reason, eighty years ago, it didn't occur on this street. They have, we, there are too many problems there to move forward. My recommendation is that we stop, reevaluate, redesign, and look at a project for next year. It's been like this for sixty-plus years. Waiting another year probably is not going to create a tremendous burden on the property owners, who, two of them happen to be here this evening, if we can fix it once and fix it right and make sure we're providing proper.
Can we get their opinion on that, their buy, two cents or?
Do we have immediate issues as far as any, like, collapse or anything?
Any other testimonies?
Come on up.
Yes, absolutely.
You can both come.
We need to share that chair.
So I was the one who originally brought this project forward.
You state your name for the.
My name's Wayne Verdorn, and I live on ten twelve East Ninth Avenue.
I'm Justin Lefal. I have ten fourteen right next to him.
Thank you.
I met my wife and started living at that property about twelve years ago. As soon as I started living there with her, she had always had small issues where you could get it with the big sewer, power sewer snake. And we continued to do that until it got to be, you couldn't get it anymore. If you do it with that, it's like thirty days, you got to do it again, you got to do it again. So back in twenty twenty-two, during Thanksgiving, we had issues, and I couldn't get Neen Kirk or Adrian Plumbing out there. We went the whole week of Thanksgiving where we couldn't flush our toilet, take a shower, couldn't do nothing. At that point, it's like, we got to do something. It's, I, I don't like seeing the sixty thousand dollar assessment, but my property's not worth anything if I can't flush my toilet.
What are your thoughts on just pausing and fixing not only the sewer, but also the water?
So I'm not going anywhere. I mean, I'm staying at that property. My wife and I talked at a point where maybe we should just sell it, get out of the sewer issue, move somewhere else, but we've made improvements. We've built onto the house, and, and we're staying there. So I like option number four. I don't know how he feels about it, but, well, I like option number four with maybe the assessment from number three, or like, like Chad was talking, I mean, a certain percentage is only, only mine. It kind of, it's kind of bad that all the other property, the other length of property doesn't get no assessment, but I have to be able to flush my toilet. If I got to eat sixty thousand, I got to eat it, but I can't eat a hundred and eighty as a private property owner to redo it on myself like number one. Number one, I can't handle.
Can I back this up to the map?
Yeah.
I'm not really sure how, oh, here we go. Which way do I got to go?
Yep, left, yep. Keep going, yep.
So I don't know if you guys can see that. Ten fourteen is, is my house. I'm on the south side of the street, right in the center of the map. Wayne is just to the left of me. Yes, exactly. That's me, and then Wayne is just to the left. This sewer main comes out, or the, the line comes out of Wayne's house at a forty-five and ties in underneath of the street, basically right in front of my house, and then runs east. There's a manhole cover on.
Eleventh, is that what that is?
There's a manhole cover. Jared Henrickson, who owns Adrian Plumbing and Electrical, has jetted his sewer multiple times over the last few years, but he's also ran a camera and says with grave certainty that ten twenty-three, which would be directly to the, above where that one sixty-seven is, that one is tied into this main as well, and it's not notated on the, on the city prints. Do you know anything about that? All these fittings where these houses enter this main are, are standard, you know, low-sweep fittings, but he said where that, ten, what did I say, ten twenty-three, where that ties in, it looks as though it was just poked through, like, the pipe was beat and then a, the sewer line was just pushed in there. It's not a, a typical fitting. So there is actually, not that it's going to have a huge impact on the price per residence, but it would potentially be splitting this four ways and not three.
That's worth looking into.
We don't have any, we just learned tonight that there was potential water issues. We don't really have any, any water issues to speak of.
I don't see anything in my house.
What did you mean when you said?
The water issue is not service issue per se. How it's mapped, how it's getting there to their houses are not per city, current city policy or utility policy. But one of them comes through behind the houses, between the houses, and come behind and serves it, and your two houses comes from Tenth Street and then off of one inch main, and then split into two-way routes, if they don't try to eliminate that kind of situation.
If we were to postpone this and we looked at the complete project, we can, we could hire an appraiser to look at what the improved value would be by doing a complete improvement, and that would give us a legitimate idea of what is an acceptable assessment, rather than us throwing numbers out and saying, you know, well, one-third is acceptable. We really need to be aware of what the improved increased value would be after the project is completed because by state statute, we're not supposed to, the assessment is not supposed to exceed what the increased value is based on the improvements. And, and I talked to these gentlemen briefly before the meeting, if, if there's not an urgency that this needs to be done this season.
My communications with Jared at Adrian Plumbing, I don't foresee no urgency in, in collapse in that, in that privately-owned main. It's just, I'm gonna, maybe twice a year, have six hundred bucks because, you know, it plugs, it usually plugs where ten seventeen, I want to say to the northwest of our houses are. That's, that's normally where the, where it plugs. Their sewer comes in, and it backs up mine. For years, I would go talk to the neighbors when our sewer would back up, and nobody else had an issue. Depending on who's living in that house on ten seventeen, and I think what they put down the drain causes more or less issues for me because of those six, the six inches pipe. It's not big enough, like, if they put a lot of grease down, it'll plug me up and back me up where the other people on there don't feel the effect. Normally, I'm the only one ever affected on this deal, but it's because of what somebody down the line is doing to the line. My wife and I, my wife speaks Spanish. We went and talked to these people over the years before he bought the house next door, and they had no issues, so they didn't want to get involved. They didn't want to help cover the cost of jetting the, the main because I had no problem. I wouldn't want to give you any money, you know? So I, I don't foresee no issue in putting it off another year or so. It's just going to increase some more cost for me, which is okay, because I'm going to get a better product at the end if that's what you guys do.
You guys do a reasonable amount of slaving each year on some sewers. Is that correct?
We do, yep.
Yeah? Has slaving this ever been talked about?
No, because it's private.
Oh, of course.
And it's small, I'm assuming, because it's six inches. I'm telling you, as soon as they dig that street up, I'm redoing from my house out to the, the street, too. It's a no-brainer for me because I can get rid of that old clay type pipe, where we videotaped mine before numerous times. I got some low spots where something might sit, but it doesn't restrict flow permanently. But I'm getting that fixed as soon as this project goes forward because I don't want any problems.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else have any testimony? Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Um.
Action on the hearing.
That's what I wrote. Steph requests council consider the resolution showing in Exhibit One, ordering improvements and preparation of plan for East Ninth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Construction as required by State Statute four twenty-nine to proceed with this assessment project.
Do we want to do what?
I like.
What Steve recommended.
Yep.
That you're going to more fairly.
Even things out a little bit.
Associate with what the benefit is. That's probably the way to go, then.
Was what you said option four?
Mm-hmm.
Or was it different?
Yes, I, I guess my recommendation, and, and the way the case item is, is we're asking council to consider what direction they want to go. In my opinion, the most prudent direction is to not proceed with this project at this time, not continue with the assessment process. Look at the entire project, and I think so that we have good legal standing on what the assessment would be, an independent appraisal to ensure that what ultimately is being, would be proposed to be assessed falls within statutory requirements, that it falls in line with the increased valuation. As much as we may want it, may wish to do that this year, I'm not going to put undue pressure on our engineering department to try and push this through this year, and it may be something that could get started, but I would, I guess my recommendation to council is let's not move forward with the assessment process. Let's take a larger look at, at the project. I just learned tonight that there may be a fourth service in there.
So during this revaluation, would staff be able to determine who actually is the benefits off of this?
Yes, if there's.
Improved line?
Yes, I mean, we could, we could televise it, and if there is a fourth service coming in, we could do that. We could better map the water services. We've had several areas in the city that have had services coming across other people's properties or split services, and whenever possible, we fix that issue. So my recommendation is to not proceed with the assessment policy and direct staff to study this further and come back to council with, with a recommendation at a later date.
Exactly what my motion was going to state.
All of that.
And second.
Okay, we need to make a motion, right? And second. Okay. So we did, we did have a motion and seconded. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Opposed, motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. We have city council minutes, special counsel, school board, District five eighteen, Board of Directors joint meeting minutes, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, city council meeting minutes, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, Water and Light Commission meeting minutes, February fifth, two thousand twenty-four, Public Arts Commission meeting minutes, January Public Arts Commission meeting minutes, January 23rd, 2024. YMCA Board of Directors minute meetings from December 18th, 2023, November 20th, 2023, October 30th, 2023, September 25th, 2023, August 28th, 2023, June 22nd, 2023, May 22nd, 2023, and April 24th, 2023. Also, uh, City Council business case items, uh, application to conduct off-site gambling, St. Mary's Church and School, and an application to conduct off-site gambling, Worthington Regional Healthcare Foundation, and bills payable.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Public safety.
Mayor, council. Since December 2008, the Worthington Police Department has been a member of the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Task Force. The Task Force operates under a joint powers agreement administered by the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. The Task Force partnership provides expertise and assistance and has been instrumental in local convictions for crimes related to the possession of child pornography. WPD assigns a detective as a representative to the Task Force for local cases. The current JPA will expire soon and the renewal will be effective through May 31st of 2029, and this is shown in Exhibit 1. Staff request council action to adopt the proposed resolution shown in Exhibit 2, authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and public safety director to sign this agreement on behalf of the city.
Is this one you've been part of for how long?
Since 2008.
Moving in the directions that you feel adequate?
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, they're, they're a huge resource. With, without, without involvement with this group, these cases would be very difficult, if not impossible, with, with just local resources. So it's, it's a very valuable partnership.
Something that's a growing problem?
Yeah, it's a problem that's not going away, that's for sure, unfortunately, sadly.
I would move to approve the proposal. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
A second case item, early riser Kiwanis members generously donated $150 to the Worthington Police Department as a contribution to the DARE program. The funds will be used to purchase supplies related to DARE programming. Council action is requested to adopt a resolution shown on Exhibit 3, accepting the $150 donation.
Move to adopt with thanks.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Troy.
Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Um, each spring, the city of Worthington has a community-wide cleanup. Uh, this cleanup is an opportunity for every residential garbage customer to place certain items at the curb to be picked up and removed by city staff. Uh, this cost of this spring cleanup is distributed over all residential garbage customers and is included in their monthly utility bills. Now, certain items that are picked up, like mattresses, box springs, uh, appliance, furniture, electronics, have an extra fee and require the purchase of a tag to be included in the annual cleanup collection. Uh, the current price of these tags is $11, and this is the price, the price of this special item tag has remained the same as far back as 2013. Uh, this is as far back as I looked. Um, in 2013, the total cost to do this cleanup, uh, project was $49,961. The total cost of the spring cleanup for 2023 was $72,409. Uh, 2023 revenue for this operation was $20,868 from, uh, special pickup tag sales and $51,000 from monthly charges on utility, uh, bills and for, for revenue collection of 72,484.53. Uh, the budget for 2024, what we're budgeting for this year, is approximately $76,000. Staff would like counsel to consider increasing the price of these tags from $11 to $15. Uh, city staff has researched other communities in the area and have similar programs. Below are the most current rates they are charging. Um, they're listed there in your case item. Um, some counties take some things, some counties don't. Some don't take electrics, electronics, some, uh, don't take appliances. A lot of them have, uh, haul-two pickups where, where residents haul stuff to, um, to one certain area and then staff takes it from there. So, uh, if we increase our price to $15, you'll notice that we're like pretty much right in the middle of most of them, uh, that you see on there. Um, and I think that it's time we raise the price because we're seeing more of this stuff all the time and, um, things aren't getting any cheaper. Fuel's not getting cheaper, labor's not getting any cheaper. And so, um, we want to make it a nice even number, so that's why we went to 15.
Yep, yes, Amy?
Um, I think we need to be careful to not overprice the tags so people don't put their stuff out because I think it does a great job. You guys do a ton of work, but we get rid of all that junk that people put in the back of their houses and whatever. So we need to make sure we stay on that sweet spot where they'll still pay for it and not leave it out.
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
Based on the tag sales of, say, last year, for example, what would, what would the additional income of $15 per tag be?
We, we, we sell, I think we sold about 1,800 tags last year. Um, somewhere in that vicinity. I, I looked it up today. So an additional $4, um, so 5,300 or something like that.
Something else that's happening with the, to the Southwest Regional Development Commission, they've been talking, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, um, they're looking at the, uh, landfills anyways, as far as what they're capable of. And, uh, like when they're demolishing houses or hazardous material and stuff, there's only certain places that they'll be able to dump anyways. I think ours is a facility that way, but we could be seeing people hauling from other counties and stuff to our landfill anyways. So in turn, this is, could happen within a couple of years anyways, so that's going to raise prices again.
Yeah, I, ideally, I'd like to see a haul-two, um, option sometime, but I'm not ready to, to research that and see that. And I think that's kind of a hardship for our older citizens or, or any citizen who doesn't have a way to haul these things. Uh, one thing I will say is.
One of those citizens.
Yep.
You can call me elderly, but.
I didn't say that, I said, or any citizens. Um, you can, and, and I'd like to, and while we're here and, and, you know, people can watch this, you don't have to wait for our spring cleanup to like get rid of your stuff. You can call SCOP sanitation anytime and they'll come and pick it up. You just don't get the subsidized rate. This is about half price. At $15 is about half price of what they would charge you or what they normally charge. So it's a subsidized rate.
How is the amount on the utility bill determined? Is it a percentage?
We take whatever the total cost is, and then we divide it among all the utility customers. And it's one year behind.
The following year.
In 2013, it was 31 cents per month for public utility bills. And last year was a dollar, for this year, I think it's a dollar 27, so a month. So it's not, it's not a huge amount, but.
$2.10.
Was it, is that what it is now? Okay.
So you're saying that if they get more money from these, from these tag sales, then it'll reduce the amount that goes on to potentially.
I, I just think that, well, my biggest complaint is, is we have a lot of people who take advantage of this program. We have, uh, a lot of landlords in this community that save up stuff, like, because you can't have 10 mattresses on one property. I mean, when there's a two-bedroom house and you've got 10 mattresses on one property, somebody's saving them up someplace. And I, I know this for a fact, but I don't, there's no way to really.
We shouldn't punish our non-landlord residents because of what a landlord does.
Right, but that, what I'm saying is at least we'd get a little bit more out of those landlords that keep it, they're, you know, the tags would cost it, but it would cost the average person who doesn't do that more too. I agree. I, I just brought it forward. It's, it's entirely up to you guys what you want to do.
The tags that have been previously, uh, bought, because you can use them from one year to the next. Would those be honored?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yeah. So if you buy a tag and you set your thing out, and I do this myself, and somebody comes and takes the appliance because they want to recycle it, and you have the tag, you can use it on the following year. And I would, would not change that.
As coincidence, I received an email today by one of the regional city administrators asking this very question, what other cities do. And seeing what other cities do, we really have the best program. Uh, most of them require homeowners to haul on a given day that they pick out in the spring. They set it up as convenient to themselves. It, it has the service of being, people being able to get rid of this, these, these items, but, uh, the, the benefit to all of us is that it allows people to keep their houses uncluttered and junk doesn't end up in the roadside ditch out in the, in the country. Uh, we do have a, a cost associated with, with this. The $11 is, was a difficult amount. Having to stock up on ones and, and Mindy's office is one of the four places where you buy tags. So, uh, I think having a more even or rounded dollar amount certainly will be easier on the, between city hall, the public utilities office, uh, SCOP sanitation office, and they also sell them at JBS, so.
And Bedford's.
And Bedford's last year, yes. Yeah, so I mean, just.
I think that, I think the cleanup is one of the more visible and real, um, parts that our community sees the benefit that, that they, they get from, from the city. So I think it's important that we continue the program.
Okay, council, do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to increase the prices to $15 per tag. Um, kind of with the understanding that this, we don't plan on doing this again for a while in the future.
No, I, no, I, I mean, I just, I, once again, it's, it gets charged back on their utility bills. I just think that, for one thing, an even number, we haven't increased it for over 10 years, and an even number is a big assistance to city staff.
And we're still well under all the other communities of our size as well.
Yep, we're, we're, we're right in the same ballpark, so. Yeah, I don't, I'm not looking to make money or charge more than anybody else because I think it's a valuable service to our, to our citizens. Um, I think there's a lot of well-informed people and they, they do, they follow the rules and sets us up. We have a few people that are.
Where they come up with all this stuff year after year. It's like, oh my God, I got an old TV ready to come out, so.
Counsel one, because you, you see those big, things take four people to lift them? I, I thought they were gone 20 years ago, but whatever.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Administration?
All right, uh, on sale Sunday, Sunday liquor license for Volk Johnson Post, VFW 3958. The Volk Johnson Post submitted an application for an on-sale Sunday liquor license. VFW currently holds a club on-sale liquor license and would like to add Sunday liquor. Fee is $200 per year, be prorated at $83.30 for February 13th, 2024, through the end of June of '24, which time the annual renewal for the license, period of July 1, 2024. And note the, the typo here that would go through June 30th of 2025. All required fees and paperwork have been received. Council action is requested to approve the on-sale liquor license for Volk Johnson Post 3958.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Next item, on-sale and Sunday liquor license application for the Japina Ethiopian cuisine. Uh, Japina Ethiopian cuisine restaurant submit an application for on-sale and Sunday liquor license. The fee is $3,200 per year and be prorated at $1,599.96 from February 13th of '24 through the end of June of '24, which time it would renew the license for a period of July 1, 2024, and again through June 30th of 2025. All the required fees, paperwork, and background checkmen received and completed. Council action is requested to approve the on-sale and Sunday liquor license application for Japina Ethiopian cuisine.
Move to approve with the stated date change.
Second.
Have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Uh, next item, resolution appointing election judges and alternates for the March 5, 2024 presidential nomination primary election. Uh, Statute 204B point 21 subdivision 2 states that election judges for precincts in a municipality shall be appointed by the governing body of the municipality before the election at which they will be, they will serve, uh, for the March 5, 2024 presidential nomination primary election. In addition, statute provides that municipalities may by resolution authorize a city clerk to appoint additional or alternate judges should the need arise for the PNP, as we refer to it at election training last week. Exhibit 5 is a resolution appointing a slate of judges that are also included in the exhibit for the March 5, 2024 presidential nominating primary election and authorize a city clerk to appoint additional or alternate election judges should the need arise. Council action is requested to adopt the resolution appointing the judges and authorizing city clerk to appoint additional or alternate judges as necessary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
How are we doing on, um, you got room for more?
Uh-huh, absolutely, always.
All right.
Okay, a motion and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Next item, the nominating committee meeting was held on January 31st and are making the following recommendations for committee appointments and reappointments. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board reappoint Mike Cooley to a five-year term and reappoint Salvador Adame for a five-year term. Both of these expire on October 31st, 2028. On the Cross-Cultural Advisory Committee, appoint Leah Gossem to replace a, a member that is declined to serve another term. Her term would expire in December 31st, 2026. The Public Arts Commission, reappoint Blake Rinear to a second term and reappoint Brett Lehman to a second term. Both of those terms expire November 30th, 2026. On the Planning Commission, reappoint Mike Haf for a three-year term expiring on March 31st, 2026. Airport Advisory Board, appoint Armin Eschleman. Uh, that term would expire on September 30th, 2028, and appoint Phil Willardson, uh, to replace and fill the unexpired term of Trent Palm, who moved from the community. That term would expire in September 30th, 2025. Center for Active Living, appoint Judy Alm. Uh, that term would, sir, would expire on November 30th, 2025. Uh, appoint Julie Haas for a term to expire in December 31st, 2026, and appoint Renee Heidebrink, uh, to a term that would expire on December 31st, 2026.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next one, resolution approving charter commission member appointments and reappointments. On October 9th, 2023, the council approved the nominated committee recommendations for committee appointments and reappointments. Under Minnesota statutes, city council, uh, must also by resolution nominate the eligible individuals and submit a petition to the district court to appoint the individuals as members of the Worthington City Charter Commission. Aaron Kinzer, the charter commissioner attorney, is recommending that the members currently serving a second term for the commission be added to the resolution for reappointment as well. Uh, those, uh, those members, uh, being requested for appointment and reappointment were shown in Exhibit 6. Council action is requested to adopt. Counsel action is requested to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second. Okay, first and seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, what, can you remind us what the charter commission is commissioned to do? What are their tasks?
They, correct me, Mindy, but it is any changes to the actual char, charter. They can bring forward their own changes, but they have to, if council recommends a change to the charter or if the public can also make a recommendation, the charter commission is the first body that would take that under consideration and study.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next item, professional service agreement, the review of compensation administration policy. Abdo Solutions was engaged in April of 2023 to perform an initial review of the city's compensation plan that was adopted in 1988 with minor revisions in 1991 and 2021. The review included evaluating the current salary structure, reviewing exempt and non-exempt wage grades, reviewing annual cost of living adjustments and appraisal process, reviewing the position scoring and pointing methodology, reviewing paid time off and health insurance benefits, providing recommendations for linking performance rating to compensation decisions and reviewing and providing recommendations for performance evaluation. Abdo's initial review of the compensation plan resulted in several key recommendations included combining the exempt and non-exempt salary schedules into one table, reassign points given for certifications to other factors, reevaluate the current appraisal form and update the merit matrix to consistently reward top performers. Staff subsequently requested a proposal from Abdo Solutions to provide further services to complete a comprehensive compensation classification study. Staff's intent to have any changes to the compensation plan adopted by council ahead of the current bargaining unit agreements, which terminate on December 31 later this year. Scope of work to be performed, job description updates and review of 67 positions, position classification evaluation, market compensation analysis, classification and compensation system development, Minnesota pay equity testing, review of current performance program and identification of key performance metrics, development of performance management process tools and training, and customized supervisor and employee training. The above scope of work will be performed for a fee of $59,950, be funded with unallocated American Rescue Plan funds, ARP funds. Counsel action is requested.
I think those are all good things to evaluate, reassess, add in, things like that as it becomes tougher and tougher in the marketplace to get people, to retain people and do those. And I don't think, I think if we don't stay on the game, we are only going to see our continued struggle in obtaining and retaining employees.
I think it's important that, that it's specific to Worthington, the city of Worthington is not a, they're not bringing in a kind of a cookie cutter evaluation here.
Just to update counsel, we have in the ARP funds, we have $237,000 that is still unallocated at this point. That, that's where these funds would, would come out of that, unallocated.
With what he just said, we, we need to make sure that what are, what deliverables, their deliverables are what, what this shows.
Right, and we had myself, Scott Hayne, general manager of public utilities, and Lori Henning, who works with us in human resources, we had several lengthy meetings with, with the Abdo folks to go over, to make sure they understood what we wanted and we understood what they were intending to deliver so that we had complete agreement. Yes, it took a couple of meetings to make sure we all understood what, what we were looking for. And so we, we are comfortable that they understand exactly what we want and their proposal matches that.
All right, anybody else need a motion?
I'd move to approve the contract with Abdo for the $59,950.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And seconded, okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next one is a professional service agreement for city hall improvements. To do a study on city hall improvements, we requested a proposal from the architecture and engineering firm to study city hall improvements. We requested that from Short Elliot Hendrickson. Study includes review of interior finishes, exterior cladding, windows, HVAC systems and controls, lighting, and most importantly, security and access improvements. Upon completion of their study, they'll provide the city with a written report outlining current building conditions and recommended improvements and estimated cost of those Scope of work is detailed in exhibit 8. The professional services would be performed for a fee of $6,500. And just so everyone understands, this is a study to look at the current condition and make recommendations for improvements, identify those improvements and put a cost as, so estimated causes associated with them that we can study and consider as, as we make decisions to move forward.
Move to approve the.
Study.
The study.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next item is memorandum of understandings with our bargaining units. We have these MOUs with our three bargaining units that were based on, agreed upon by city council and the water and light commission as part of the 2024 budget discussions. In brief terms, with law enforcement group number four, those are the non-supervisors, their normal workday shall be 12 hours rather than eight and a half. They went to a 12-hour shift and are adjusting to that. Added Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and then the cost of living pay adjustments, which were 6% plus an additional 3% market adjustment. Law enforcement labor union 274, which are the supervisors, again, that was adding Juneteenth, their workday did not change, and then the pay adjustments, and then with the International Union of Operating Engineers number 49, that again was the Juneteenth holiday, and then their cost of living adjustment is 6%. That was citywide. Councils requested to approve the above noted MOUs and authorize execution of them by the mayor and clerk.
Immediate cost of the pay increases coming from where?
The added revenue that the city was able to generate by moving certificates of deposit in the latter part of 2023, that will generate an additional $150,000 in interest earnings in 2024. The law enforcement pay adjustments are coming from the public safety aid that was received in December from the, from the state. That will fund approximately three years of these pay adjustments through that public safety fund.
Move to approve the MOUs.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next item for consideration, the event center utilities and royalty payments. At the April 13, 2020 meeting, city council approved suspending the collection of the 10% gross sales royalty fee from the event center that the city would receive. And in addition, the city would pay all event center utility expenses resulting from the mandated closures imposed by the governor and the state of Minnesota due to COVID. Since that time, city has paid $116,128.53 in utility expenses while last collecting management fees in December of 2019. Just as an example, the city received $23,115.61 in royalty or management fees in 2019 and not received any since that time. According to profit and loss statements shared with staff for the period of 2020-2023, event center operators posted an annual average loss of $47,238 despite the city's financial support. It was also indicated that they likely would have to terminate their agreement with the city if the financial support did not continue. Since this has gone on now for four years, I thought it was time for city council to come back and think about this again and.
My question is, what, what would it look like if they terminated their agreement with the city? Because so far, it seems like we haven't been collecting anything from them and we've been paying their utilities. So I'm just a little confused what that means.
If they terminate their agreement, then the city would either run it ourselves or have to find another management company.
Okay, gotcha.
Who's the current management company?
It's the owners of the Comfort Suites Hotel. Their corporate name is Lighthouse.
Has, has staff, you mentioned the profit loss statement, but has, has staff been able to evaluate, determine from there or any other financials that they provided what their losses, what constitutes their loss of 40 grand or whatever, since they haven't had to pay utilities?
It's, I think, a lack of revenue.
So they need to advertise more, market better?
I, I think they are frustrated at not being able to attract much beyond wedding receptions and the several large events that use that place, several of which are coming up here in the next month. So.
Has their weekend calendar been full, was there?
They, they told me that 2024 is actually looking less promising. Very few weddings are booked at this point.
Have there been, been any issues with their management that might result in some of these issues?
That is possible and that's being addressed.
In conjunction with the city or internal with Lighthouse, the management of?
The, ser, management issues within Lighthouse.
They probably have to do a little more research anyways about the surrounding venues as well to be in line with, you know, pricing, for one thing, you know, there's, we've got Lermes and the Round Lake Winery and the barn and stuff. So there's, well, depends upon the standards of, of what you're looking for anyways, but like any, any business, you gotta scout out your competition.
They did have a, I know that they do compare with their likely competition, such as the winery in Round Lake and.
Yeah, it's a, it's a premium venue, it's very nice.
Yeah. And they did have a, from what I understand, a nice wedding reception there this past weekend.
It was there, it went well. Yeah, very, very, very elegant anyways.
I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to try to essentially bail them out because I do think that a lot of the issues are coming from the management side, and I don't think that that's necessarily the city's responsibility to subsidize further or to continue some of the subsidies. So I guess I'm kind of at a weird spot where I'm like, I think that there is a lot more that they could be doing as well.
Is there a, is there a penalty in termination of they, I mean, have they terminated the contract?
No, not really, there's, there is a notification period. That would be my one request that if, if we were going to terminate, terminate our contract with them or they were going to terminate, we'd really appreciate a reasonable period of time so that other steps could be taken to, to.
Have we looked into or are there other management companies anywhere around that are doing this with other venues of the like that we would have options to talk to?
I did talk to one group. They didn't, they didn't necessarily express great interest, but they didn't turn it down. They operate in a very similar situation in another city in Iowa, so they would likely have the same type of knowledge and experience.
I do think it's in Lighthouse's best interest to, they obviously want to have events because it impacts their, the hotel side of the business. So that's where I think having them completely separated out on a profit and loss can be a little bit, I don't, not necessarily deceptive, but it does impact their business too. So I think, I don't know.
I, of course, I didn't want to include the financials in the public part of the council meeting, the financials of a private business. I guess at this point, we could take no action and we could study this for another month or so and just continue as we.
I don't think we have enough information to make a decision. I mean, it would be easier to just say yes or no, but we don't, not educationally.
With the comments that Comfort Suites have made too, I think we probably need to discuss a little bit more.
All right, so we'll say no action at this point. We'll take this up at a later date. Next item is financial commitment for a potential future ice arena.
You missed one.
We got acceptance.
Did I?
Yep.
Oh, how could I miss that?
Armable.
Acceptance of Armable grant offered through Southwest Initiative Foundation. Armable operator Gail Holinka applied for and was approved for an $8,000 grant from the Southwest Initiative Foundation. Project title is building relationships, creating art with the young and the young at heart. If approved by council, the city will be the grant administrator. The funds would be submitted directly to the city and then dispersed to Minnesota Holinka upon submission of proper documentation in compliance with the approved budget. And I have had conversations with both representatives from the Southwest Initiative Foundation and with Gail Holinka, just to make sure I understood and they understood the process of how this would go forward, so.
Are there specific items that they need to do to, to comply and then that won't, that allow us to disperse? I mean, there's criteria.
There is a detailed work action plan and then a somewhat brief but budget that would identify the categories that acceptable funds could be reimbursed for, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, ice arena financial commitment, request for the city to participate in funding and. Request for the city to participate in funding and operating new ice arena have been brought forward by members of the community and other public organizations. City council has been asked to consider their commitment to financial operation and ownership involvement in a possible new or renovated ice arena. Just to remind everyone and inform the public, we have, as the city, have three sources of possible funding for an ice arena, undesignedated reserves, general obligation bonds, and local option sales tax revenue. As council takes this under consideration and discussion, my recommendation is to consider or include the following parameters. If there is a formal commitment to moving forward with the project, what that, if so, what the total financial commitment would be and conditions that council may set to secure or trigger the city's commitment to moving forward. Council discussion is requested.
Chad? Been in the discussion for quite a while anyways, too, yeah.
To kind of recap what the, not that we have to do what any other organizations are doing, but the school district, they have not come up with a formalized agreement yet, correct?
That's correct.
Their discussion was somewhere between no commitment and up to, I think about seven million was what they had thrown around at their work session.
I did read into some of the school minutes anyways, you know, the board went down the line and I know their best was providing, I think Adam Bloom, I'm not sure, but the best offer they had that came from him, I think, was land plus about eight million. Then there's a couple other ones that were around two million and another one was four or five.
They had their work session?
Yes, I think it was last, maybe Wednesday.
We have Ron McCarver with the Nobles County Fair Board here. If he, anyone wants to ask him questions or you wanna provide some input, the fair board is the, essentially the landlord of the current ice arena.
That's correct. We, we own the property that it sits on, but we don't own the building. The Hockey Association owns the building. The city's been leasing that now for, is it two years?
Two.
Yeah. Two, two years and managing it. We haven't really been involved in any of the discussions at this point of going forward, what's gonna happen, but you know, one of the, one of the discussion items has been, are we open to maybe doing additional stuff at the fairgrounds? We're open to having that conversation. I would be, myself personally, I haven't really talked to the board about additional stuff, but parking and some of those could be some issues at the facility there if we, if we add another arena. I assume we're trying to hook them together and, and make a nice complement with that. We've had my, some discussions outside of meetings and things, a little concerned with hockey and, and how hockey, this Hockey Association's been moving along with it and at one point there was a, a statement made, and this was outside of any meetings, talking about, you know, what would they do with the, with the old building if we built new? And that was a little bit of concern to us is what, you know, what's gonna happen with that? Is it gonna be there? Cause we do have a lease for ninety-nine years. We expect to be able to use it the three weeks out of the year. That's a, you know, a miniscule thing, but I also think it's went well with the city operating at this last two years. I, I don't know that we have any real issues with hockey or Hockey Association or the city operating it. So questions that you guys have for us?
The only thing that I've heard floated around is if there was to be a new event arena built, does it, where does it get built? And the lead topic of discussion has been at a different site, not attached or grown from the current. What had been discussed as one option is if, because there was a request at the beginning of looking at a, having two sheets of ice in this community. Financial cost, at least the, who knows how, what the estimates really pertain to because they were very preliminary in, in cost of two sheets was way bigger than most anybody felt were the comfort zones. So then the topic was brought up of if we just improved the conditions of the building that were there to better suit current use parameters, could another, could a new event arena be built someplace else? Predominantly talk was using school district land on the West Side complex because they could use that as donation of land towards the project and then just keep that facility running as long as possible with possible improvements to the infrastructure of it to, to make it work. Other than that, Ron, I didn't hear a whole lot of other discussion of do we add on and build a whole new one at the fairgrounds, just so you know.
Yep. And, you know, and, and I guess I'm not sure if you're all aware of kind of some of the issues that are going on with, with the building that's there. One of the issues is there is no, what do I call it? A heated, a heated system that's under the existing ice to keep it from shifting. There hasn't really been too many issues with that. There's been a, a lot of issues where the pipe goes underneath and, and stuff was shearing and breaking there. They apparently have, believe they fixed most of that when they put the little, they put a little room under there a couple of years ago. That's helped, but again, it doesn't have the heating source underneath, so that is a problem. You know, we like to see the facilities out at the fairgrounds as a whole used because the more they're used, the less we have issues with vandalism, just whatever. So even if you were to build something, I would hope that the city would continue with the building, utilize it for, you may use it, utilize it for ice, you may utilize it for something else throughout the year. I think that's been a good, a good deal for the association as well, the fair association as well as the Hockey Association, so.
That'd be an ideal location, it's closer to the motels and heating establishments and the ease of getting there off of the highway.
Will there come a time when the fair board somewhat, I mean, hopefully soon, would be able to come together to discuss about the potential of adding on to, at the current location instead of building at a totally separate site?
I guess we would be open to having that conversation at any time, you know. We, we haven't been, you know, a party to that. We haven't really been called to the, called to the table, which is kind of fine because I think everybody needs to figure out what they wanna do. Get a couple plans together and kind of work, work from there. And if that's one of the plans you wanna look at, we'd certainly bring a few members and, and have a discussion sometime if, if that's what you'd like to do.
Be the ideal location that way. I would think that, cause they were looking at new facility and then fixing this, you know, doing the, bringing up the, the floor part of it as well.
Well, we're, we're all about options. So, I mean, and if that, if that's a potential option, I think that's something that needs to be on the table. So, and as I said, we're open to it and hopefully we can get, you know, find some uses that we can utilize it as well during the fair or during other times of the year. I know one of the issues is they, they would like to have ice year round and that's not necessarily a bad thing, but in the current facility, I don't believe that's possible. So, other questions? Well, we thank you for your support for the fair and everything else as well, so if there's something we can do, let me know.
And Ron, I think we, I wanna make sure you understand, nothing is gonna move forward at the fairgrounds without full cooperation with the fair association.
I just think, you know, as you, as we said, you kind of read it in the paper and you kind of shake your head going, huh. It's, it's being decided without us at the table, but again, we're kicking around options to come back to three or four potential options and, and come back to what, what would, that's when I would think we would come to the table and have that discussion.
Facility could benefit you as well, or we'd make sure that.
Yes. Yep. So, anyway.
Any other questions? Thanks, Ron.
Hey, thanks for your time.
My question to council is, do you wanna keep moving forward with this? Are we, are we gonna wait and take a backseat to another organization that we're gonna wait to weigh in until somebody else makes a commitment? Are we gonna, where do you want staff to continue to?
I think we should commit to the project. I mean, we've talked about it and talked about it and talked about it. I don't know that anybody seen, has stated that it's a bad idea. See the benefits of having, continuing to have hockey in a town this size. It'd be sad if we didn't. It's not gonna happen to, with any of the other entities individually, so I would like to commit to a portion, you know, to put a portion of money towards the ice arena. I would assume the city would continue to manage it.
Our intent is that if requested, we would continue to manage it.
I would not be in favor of, of committing money to working on the old ice arena. I think that's a waste of money. So, and I would, I'll throw a number out there. I would, I would throw it ten million dollars out and figure out how to fund it.
Council comments?
I do think that this project was really kind of pushed along by the school district and so I would like to see them commit to a number two. And I want them, I want personally to see them commit to the same number that we are. So I would like to do something where it would be an amount up to ten million and it would be matched by the school district. So if they're only gonna come up with six million, then that is also our number.
I would, I would add to that, that, and land not be part of that dollar amount. If, yeah, I would, actually, I would be in favor if it's not at, if something isn't built at the current site of the, of the ice arena and we're doing something there on the fairground property, I would, I would like to see it on city property or, or land property available to the city. Primarily, it'd be a great opportunity to bust out to the north side of the interstate. It would attract, I think it, I would, I think if, it would expand and attract more business.
Hotel, hotels.
Out to that, that neck of the woods in the industrial area slash bike comfort, you know, comfort and suites there. I think the, the potential for really it being attractive to that, to that area would benefit the, would benefit the city more than it being on school property. Plus, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, can, I'd wanna go that route too if we, if we were going to continue to manage it, manage the property.
Comments, questions?
Everybody knows I'm a drinker. I, I think, as I've stated in the, in the meetings we've had with the other entities, if we, we meaning people, decision makers, business community, regional residents, if we don't commit to becoming and actually being the regional hub of this area, we are letting and watching dollars leave our community and it will continue. I truly believe that. Will this, would this, will this be an easy thing? Nope. But is it being done by others? It is. My comments in previous meetings about some focus on how to term this or what it can be, I think have valor in the fact that this isn't just a hockey facility and I think we need to look at it as that. Hockey being a prime source of the facility and the use, but on a sheet of ice in a facility of that type, you can do many things. Many things can be accomplished and had and brought in and utilized even with that. I think county-wise that it would be, become or staple ourselves as a place for events or tournaments, for trade shows, for sportsman's outdoors shows, farm shows, things of that sort that maybe not are going, they're, they're never maybe going to be of the magnitude that people travel to the Twin Cities or Sioux Falls for. But if we don't do some of these things, the goal we've been working at for a number of years of attaining, retaining people in this community and showing that there is a reason why the population of Worthington has continued to grow for thirty years, as proven by census, that if we don't do that, we are going to watch events, people, jobs, businesses and everything continue to slide south and west of us more and more or just become more metro and we become more outstate even more than we already are. We have nothing within sixty miles of us that is even half our size. Let's staple ourselves as the regional place for this sixty mile area to come and do things, to have things and do that.
I hear commitment. What's your total financial?
I'm okay with the ten. Yes.
Have any conditions?
No, I, I honestly, I, I do like the functionality of a north property and the visibility of that on I-90 and Highway fifty-nine, close to sixty, you know, close to all three exits. I do like that. I don't mind if it were to be a west side school thing, cause I see some of the benefit and, and continuity for use by the district for things in that aspect. So that, I don't know that, I, I could live with a lot in that aspect because I think we're all mobile people now. We all move fairly well. We all travel to a lot of things and a lot of places that, that little venture from the interstate Highway sixty, fifty-nine, whatever, two sixty, any of those, isn't too much of a hassle to get to. I'm fine with ten and I'm fine to listening to more. I think we need to, as I said in the last group meeting, I think we need to hear from current buildings that have either just opened or are in process right now of their cost, their features, and if so, whatever those are, meet our requirements, okay, then we know, opposed to a, we estimate that it would cost this to do it in one fashion. What are the different building types, styles, and what can we do for X? If that number becomes twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, eighteen, whatever it is, what can that be? I agree with Amy on putting money into the current facility. It is functioning. It hasn't broke. It would be dire if it didn't, but I think we need to commit to, can we do something like this before we just put money into that? If there can't be a commitment, then we'll have to rethink what that is. But I don't think you can forego the dream of what does this community deserve, need, or could utilize to keep things going there, so. Okay. Do we wanna make a motion on Amy's commitment?
I still feel like we're somewhat just. I still feel like we're somewhat just pulling a number out of the air to do, um, right? Um, but, so Steve is, um, ten million feasible, eight million feasible? Can we even do that? Or at that, at the expense of what?
The...
Let me, let me ask this. What if, what if everybody else said, nah? Would we still feel it's a good thing?
I think the project looks quite a bit different if that's the case, um, to be honest, but...
And that is immediate, maybe further down the road.
I had put together several scenarios of if we had committed ten million dollars of funding to, to an ice arena project, the two million from the sales tax revenue that was allocated within the, the tax bill. Uh, and then the other eight million comes from a combination of bonding and undesignated funds. So it can be, uh, vary either way, more or less from bonding or more from undesigned reserve funds, which we do have, uh, reserve funds that could fund half or more of that remaining eight million dollars. If that's what you wanted to do, we would, you know, if interest rates fell and the, the bonding scenario became more attractive, then I would recommend that we would probably slide more money onto the bonding side. Uh, it's, I guess my, other people are, are pushing this, are pushing the city to do this. Is anyone else going to jump in and help? If, if not, then I guess it's another decision. Like Chad said, we're, do we move forward by ourselves? Do we, does the project get put aside? Um, it's, you know, the different, different location possibilities, whether it went out on city property, uh, on the north side of town, or if it went on school property on the west side, or are there other places that we haven't, uh, identified that it may go? Uh, I think one thing to, to take into consideration is that one of the conditions at this point probably has to have a December 31st deadline, because the, we don't know what the council makeup's going to be in 2025, and I don't know, uh, how the current council can commit a future funding, future projects to a, to a future council. So, um, I guess part of my recommendation is that if you want to make a commitment, there has to be a sunset date on that, uh, at the end of this year for whatever that commitment is that the council decides to put forward. It can be next year, new councilor, it may be all the, the same folks here. Uh, and it may, maybe that commitment can just be brought forward again.
This might trigger other entities to make their commitment as well, too, if it's a, an amount that...
Or it might do the opposite. If the, if we take the stance about, as, as, as the council determined that, ah, we're just going to go ahead with it regardless, we could see the school district back out or become less a part of it, because they already have a menu of millions that, that they potentially want to do within the dis, within the school district or projects. So we could see the, just the opposite happen, but...
Rent will just go up then. Well, I know Bedford Z kind of stuck their neck out anyways, making some type of commitment if we can come to terms. Hopefully, there'd be some other, other entities, businesses that, uh, would feel the same.
So what do you need from us right now?
I'm just, not, I know.
You can't hear us, hear our thoughts?
No, we don't need, we don't need anything today. It's, but I, I, sooner than, rather than later, the city should make a decision whether they want to continue to pursue being one of the partners in an ice arena, or if we're going to step away like other entities have. So, and maybe this is just the first shot, shot off of everyone's bow that, at some point, we have to stop talking about it and make a decision whether or not...
Can we have a work session where this is like the topic, and we can talk about it, make a decision, and then move forward?
Yeah. So I, we don't, I don't need a decision tonight, but probably sometime in the near future. So the other parties can decide what role they may play, too. All right, so we can move on?
Leave it at no action at this time?
All right. Uh, last item, information on local board of appeal and equalization. County assessor's office notified us that the 2024 local board of appeal and equalization for the city Worthington has been scheduled for nine AM on Thursday, May 2nd, at the Nobles County Commissioners' room. A reminder, in order to conduct the meeting, there has to be a quorum of city council. At least one, uh, has to, we have to have a local board of appeal and equalization trained member in attendance. Currently, the mayor and council members urged Cumming, Keel Black, and Colman are certified by the state. Uh, meeting invites been sent to the council as a reminder, uh, to make sure it's on your calendar.
So that was for...
Information only. That wraps up the administration side.
Onto engineering?
Hello again. It's been a long time.
[laughing]
Um, my second item is approve plans for Church Avenue pavement reconstruction and Second Avenue street construction authorized advertisement for bids. City staff has prepared plans and specifications for Church Avenue pavement reconstruction and the Second Avenue street reconstruction projects. These two projects were presented and approved at the January 22nd, 2024 improvement hearing. Staff recommends that council pass the resolutions shown in Exhibit 2A and 2B approving the plan and specification and authorize an advertisement for bid to be received on March 13th, 2024 at 2:00 PM and considered for award at the March 25, 2024 council meeting. So I need two actions on each resolutions on Exhibit 2A and 2B.
Move to approve resol, uh, resolution for...
Church Avenue.
Church Avenue.
Okay. We have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Move to approve the resolution on Second Avenue.
Second.
Okay, a motion is seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Uh, resolution pertaining to intent to bond for costs incurred in making public improvement. Federal tax regulation requires that local governments declare the intent to reimburse themselves for prior costs incurred in making public improvements with proceed from bonds. In other words, the city must state the intent to sell bonds for a project after significant costs have already been incurred for the project. It is typically for the city to temporarily finance improvements with construction fund reserve until an adequate amount of cost from various projects. Projects have been incurred to warrant the issuance of a bond. Staff recommends that council pass the resolutions in Exhibit 3A and 3B as it pertains. The maximum amount listed in the resolution is approximately 10% higher than the project estimate presented for the project ordered by council. I need two actions as well for, one for church and one for Second Avenue.
Need resolutions for both?
One each, yep. For both, yep.
For both, okay.
I just want to add, excuse me, the, uh, the bond money is not new bond money, it's the bonding that we previously received.
I've moved to adopt, uh, for the Exhibit 3A Church Avenue project.
A second?
Okay, a motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Move to adopt 3B.
Second.
Okay, a motion is seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Approved Task Order 25 with Bolton and Menck to provide professional service for DNR grant application. The East Okabinna Lake Trail has received federal funding from the Transportation Alternative Program. However, the program requires match of at least 20%. Since the cost of the trail project could be higher than initially anticipated, staff is seeking additional grant funding from a state agency to help reduce the local match or cover additional costs that weren't anticipated. Task Order 25 shown in Exhibit 4 provides professional service for a grant application for the Minnesota Department of Nature, Natural Resources Local Trail Connection Program. This program provides up to $250,000 in funding for projects that must result in a trail linkage which is immediately available for use by the general public. The cost is not, not to exceed $8,000. The application deadline is March 29th, 2024. This grant will require that the trail be completed by June 30th, 2026. Staff recommends the approval of Task Order 25 with Bolton and Menck Inc.
Chad?
Do we feel that that deadline
Mm-hmm.
will cause any issues with our friends with the future trains?
We had the discussion about that, and we feel like it's feasible. Might be a little tight, but already the application and whatever it's necessary thing we need to do is already sent, and they already, uh, replied to us. So hopefully, the next step doesn't take as much as you, we hope, well, typically been taken.
They are positively optimistic.
Well, and that's an example of unanticipated cost on this project when the railroad came back and required us to pay for a $50,000 structural review of their biodeut bridge.
Move to approve Task Order 25.
Second.
Okay, a motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Approval letter of support for building resilient infrastructure and communities grant. The county ditch 12 stormwater pond is the next phase in mitigating flood, flooding in the city. This application is to access funding to construct the proposal, proposed pond. As part of the building resilient infrastructure and communities, uh, BRIC program, a local funding match is required. The letter shown in Exhibit 5 serves as a city of Worthington's commitment to meet the local matching fund requirements for the Worthington County Ditch 12 flood mitigation project application. Should the city be successfully in obtaining funding through the BRIC program, the local matching fund required will be 10%, totaling $333,163.70. This amount will be provided as catch, cash and/or in-kind contributions and will be paid upon receipt of the bill. Uh, the application deadline is in, is February 15th, 2024. The city will have 36 months from the grant award to complete the project. Uh, city recommends the approval of the letter of support for this application. Um, I was informed that usually they grant this fund around August, so the 36-month count will start around August or September.
Move to approve the letter of support.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Look alive.
Hey, man. Got a little stiff back there.
[laughing]
All right, just one item here. This is a council discussion item on a draft ordinance to amend some parking requirements. So over the past few months, uh, our planning commission has been discussing parking requirements and directed staff to bring forth a proposed ordinance for discussion. Uh, staff's put together the following proposed changes to City Code Chapter 155, Section 42, and Chapter 155 of Appendix B, Table 2. Uh, this ordinance seeks to provide some relief for the most problematic of the city's minimum parking requirements. The proposed text below shows an adjustment to retail parking requirements, other commercial uses, cooperative parking allowances, and provides some means of control in the event that the new lesser minimum requirements are found to be insufficient in, in any scenario. Staff views this as a small step to see how it works with the goal of making other changes eventually. Um, it's no surprise, we budgeted some money to bring in a consultant to look at our entire zoning ordinance as an implementation step of our comp plan. Um, we feel this is a step we need to take even before that happens. Um, and hopefully, you know, if we're happy with this, maybe we can kind of use that as a stepping stone there, so. Uh, the proposed language here in Section 155, 42A1, uh, changing Division M to Division L, that is because Division M does not exist, so if we're changing things, we might as well fix that. Uh, Section E2, Cooperative Parking Facility, this would basically bump up three separate uses, uh, to 15% reduction allowance, and, uh, the two separate uses up to a 10% reduction allowance. This section applies pretty much to parking facilities that are jointly owned. It'd be like a building that maybe has two different tenant spaces or three tenant spaces. It's not a case where, you know, a business is using a parking lot across the street that falls into a different section of our code. And then in Appendix B, Table 2, um, you can see retail stores at one for every 400 square feet of floor area, and then all other commercial at one for every 400. Um, and then you can see we kind of shifted around the subsections there to add, uh, Letter B, uh, the administrator, which the administrator is a defined term in our zoning ordinance, reserves the right to determine whether the proposed use will have adequate parking under this requirement. The administrator may require additional information or parking generation study be prepared by a qualified professional to aid in this determination. In the event the minimum requirements are found to be insufficient, the administrator may require additional parking spaces be provided, or may request a determination be made by the planning commission. Uh, that part specifically seeks to alleviate some concern that maybe we're cutting it a little too much and kind of leaves in sort of a fail-safe, if you will, there, so. Um, we're looking for a discussion on this and whether you want us to continue moving forward into the formal ordinance process there, um, or whether you think this is too much of a change, too little of a change, drop it all together.
Chad?
My question would be, where we are currently with ordinance, and we're communities similar to our size, um, where they are, where does this fall?
Um, we're similar to pretty much any other community that hasn't touched them in 20, 30 years. Um, there's a lot of movement around for them. I mean, some are making minor adjustments. Wilmer removed their minimum requirements completely. And of course, if we wait long enough, the state legislator might quash these all together with a proposed bill hitting the state senate this year. Um, so it's kind of all over the place a little bit. Um, the movement in larger cities is to eliminate minimum requirements or reduce them significantly. You know, some in transit-oriented areas. Um, what you'll notice is that pretty much any city smaller than us hasn't really changed them, and they're very similar to what we have, because they were all put in place 30, 40 years ago, so. It's kind of hard to tell because you got to evaluate when they last changed them, so.
Have we had any issues as far as business expansions or businesses coming in and wanting?
Yeah, I'll tell you about a conversation I had this last week, um, with a development company working with a retailer. Um, you know, they'd done their background research on our city code requirements, the property they're looking at, things of that nature. They give me a call to discuss it. Um, they get to the parking section just to confirm, retail is one for every 200 square foot, is that correct? I'm like, yes, it is. And then they kind of pause, and they go, is there any movement on that? And then they share, you know, we want to be here, and what we would require is 20 more than what they... more than what they target for most of their other projects with that particular retailer, so. That's not the first time I've had that conversation. Every single time I've ever talked retail stores with anybody, our parking requirements are always kind of a sore subject there because it's always more than they feel they need for their projects, so.
Did you tell them about the, at that point, tell them about the potential...
Yeah, absolutely.
And what was...
Yeah, they, they thought it was beneficial, you know, that would bring it more down to where they were already planning to be. And of course, they can always build more if they want to, so. Yeah, they were, they were hopeful for that, so.
I do want to clarify something that was in the media recently. It, it, the headline was something along the lines of we were going to make very large parking stalls. Not that we were limiting the number that was going to be required, but instead it said there would be double the amount of space between the lines for a parking stall. So just to clarify, we're not trying to make really large parking spaces, but instead to require a reduced number of parking stalls at each of these locations. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear.
Yes, that's correct. This does not make any changes to parking stall size requirements.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I think if we don't move, we are again going to stay confrontational with the potential of development or expansion with current facilities or new facilities in this community. It has been a topic of ill discussion for many people looking at Worthington, and I think if you don't adjust, we are not going to win that battle.
Yeah, you're not going to see a retail boom because we changed this, but we're not really in a great position to be requiring things people don't need for their projects and things that don't really have a benefit to us either, so.
Not to our size.
Yep.
So you just need a direction on what to go in?
Yeah, so I'm here and move forward with this?
Yep.
All right, that's all I needed, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to committee reports. Friday, Saturday, had attended the advanced program for the League of Minnesota Cities. Just some things that they went over was crisis-ready leadership, building resilience and trust in organizations. We had a gal speaker that was about adversity instead of diversity, tackling the tough stuff, a panel discussion with local leaders. Just had question and answers for some of the mayors and council members up around the metro area. Then we had the art of negotiation, you know, for when you're having meetings and stuff on finding a center point where everybody agrees on anyways, so. Very good. I did have an SRDC meeting on Thursday. They had just said that they had gotten some of their first money in. This is a three-year program for, they've got, they awarded $290,000 for free grant writing. So they need to spend some money before the end of June, so I alerted Matt on that a little bit, too. So as far as anybody that's looking for grants or whatever's out there anyways, just reach out to staff at the South West Regional Development, and they will, they've got money to write grants. Also, whether it was a railroad or elected or something, I'm part of the legislative subcommittee, the RSDC as well. That's all I have.
I have nothing.
Maybe.
You did cultural competency training last Thursday. Thank you for all those who attended. Second part of that will be March 14, same time, same place.
No report.
Elena?
I just want to let everyone know that the YMCA Cruise Dinner Gala is going to be March 8 of this year, and so if anyone wants to buy tickets, they can contact the YMCA. And then the other thing I wanted to point out was the only person that stayed here that was not required to, is it Emilio's? Okay, so Emilio's is here, can you say your name?
My full name?
Yeah.
Emilio Conroy.
Very nice to meet you. So he is a senior at Worthington High School, and he had reached out to us recently, the entire council then with some ideas for development in town. And so I had encouraged him to come here tonight just to kind of see what it is that we do, and just to encourage him to keep bringing ideas forward, try to remain active in the community. And so I look forward to hearing your ideas that you have for development and trying to see of ways that maybe we can, you know, try to help out with that. So thank you for coming.
Yep.
And for staying. This is a long meeting, so.
Not always this long.
No. Okay, thank you.
Chad? Yes, welcome, Emilio's. I did reply to Emilio's as well via email after I received his, and I told him a statement I made earlier, it's great to have people with dreams and ideas, and then the fun gets to be of figuring out how can you, how do you, and, or maybe why can't you make something work with funding gaps, with things of that sort. It is a neat thing, and it takes, in my opinion, people who look that way at things, at the possibilities of the wonders of the, of what it could be, or how could it be better to do that? So thank you for the email, and I apologize for probably running too long in my email. I do that non-email as well, just with my mouth. So it's neat, I like talking to people of that, of that nature, so it's good to see you here. I had a joint transit board meeting, again, vehicle breakdowns, not getting the buses that were supposed to be delivered, I forget when it was, quite a while ago. And then talking about some of the things that are going on, like looking at the cost between dial-a-ride and the city route, and the differences, and the validity of what it really is being utilized for, and, and is it worth it? You take the time, the fuel, the maintenance, everything, where dial-a-ride is grown and has, I don't even remember how many times more rides being utilized for it, and we're talking 30 to 40 uses per month on the Worthington route, and the cost difference of a dollar 50 per ride from dial-a-ride to what we're spending for 35 uses, which very well could have been two people utilizing it 17 times is all on the city route. Does it make sense to even do that anymore? Or could that bus be taken off of Worthington route, put in the dial-a-ride, which can be used in Worthington, but it has a different funding mechanism and a different cost of a dollar 50, or whatever it is, and be better resourced so there isn't half hour or 45-minute durations between someone utilizing or making the call to do that? And it's, ooh, that's, I'm new to that board, and wow, I just don't, I, I deal in a lot of dollars and cents every day, and there was a lot of dollars that didn't make sense to me in, in some of that use, which could be utilized in different ways in this community. With that, there are positions open within transit and things of that nature and SMOC. They're posted, they're available, they're looking for someone to take over the transit program, things of that nature, so if you know anyone that deals in that sort of thing and they're looking for a position, positions are open. I did go to the competency training as well, very interesting, very eye-opening ways to think, look, and open yourselves to. It was very interesting to sit back and go, yeah, thought about that. Yep, we, we become patterned, and I don't want to say complacent, but we become accustomed to just, this is how, or this is the way it was, and it was, it was interesting training, so that's all I have.
Steve?
Just briefly, this past Friday, I went to Laverne and looked at their council chambers. They just recently installed a new audio/video system, and just want to get a quick look at it. They used a company from Sioux Falls, which really sparked my interest, having a, having the people in much closer proximity than we currently have, so we'll be discussing that more here in the, in the near future as we make decisions about what we do here or in another location. That's all I have.
Move to adjourn.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.